Quiet in the house, please. I'm gonna call the regular meeting of the Nevada City Council to order today. It is Wednesday, September 27, 2023, and it is 5:30 p.m. We have one matter for closed session titled Public Employee Performance Evaluation, title City Attorney. Before we adjourn to closed session, we will take any public comment on the one closed session item. Do we have any public comment in the room or online, Gabby?
We do not.
All right, we will now adjourn to closed session and we'll be back for open session at 6:30 season.
Good evening and welcome. I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Nevada City Council back to order after our closed session. I want to note that the session started at 5:30, ended at 6:00 PM, and there is no reportable action. Today is Wednesday, September 27, 2023, and it is 6:30 PM. Welcome, everybody. I'm going to pass it over to my colleague, Lou Cece, to read the tribal recognition.
We acknowledge that the Ni'in people are still here among us today, though nearly invisible. We understand that we are on Ni'in land that was never ceded, and the original tribal families have yet to recover from the near genocide of their people. As a resident or visitor in Ni'in land, we support the Nevada City Rancheria Ni'in Tribe in efforts to stabilize their people as well as their campaign to restore federal recognition.
Thank you for that, Lou. And I'm going to ask my colleague, Gary Peterson, if he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oui. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Gary, and everyone else. Madam Deputy City Clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cece.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Vice Mayor Peterson.
Here.
And Mayor Fernandez.
Here. Thank you, Gabby. Next, we have the adoption of the agenda. Council, now is the time for any of you to mention any agenda modifications. Would anybody like to make any changes to the agenda, pull consent items, or do we have recusals to announce?
Yes. I would like to pull Consent Item 4.
Okay. This is...
The second reading of the...
Right. I'm familiar. This is not consent agenda pulling, is it, at this point?
That's a consent. Yeah, you would...
Got it. Okay. All right. We're pulling Consent Agenda Item Number 4. Thank you, Lou. I'm looking for a motion in a second to adopt the agenda with item... I am just checking. It is 4?
Yes.
Okay, great. That's okay. I'm looking for a motion in a second to adopt the agenda with item number 4 pulled for additional consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Great. I have a motion and a second. A motion by Councilmember Fleming and a second by Councilmember Cece. Those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
And those opposed? All right. 5-0. Motion carries. All right. Next, we've got a delightful presentation. I'm going to invite Chief Foss to the podium, and we are going to witness and be a part of the swearing-in ceremony for K-9 police officer Ruby.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. So, this is Ruby, as everybody has met before. Traditionally, we do the introduction to the council once they've completed their FTO program or Field Training Officer program. Ruby has now officially completed her training. She actually had her final, it was supposed to be scheduled for Tuesday, we had to reschedule for emergency surgery, but she's doing excellent. She's doing great. She was, she had to get spayed a little bit early because of an infection, but nothing critical. Ruby was born in October, so she's 11 months old now, correct, Greg? And she's been with us...
Does that make her a Scorpio or a Libra?
I don't know.
When in October? She's a Scorpio.
So, she's a Scorpio. I'm not sure of the traits for that, but so far, she's been amazing in everything we could ever hope for. She's very lovable, she's very friendly, and she is unbelievably gifted in the ability of tracking. So, I went and watched her...
Good evening and welcome. I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Nevada City Council back to order after our closed session. I want to note that the session started at 5:30, ended at 6:00 PM, and there is no reportable action. Today is Wednesday, September 27, 2023, and it is 6:30 PM. Welcome, everybody. I'm going to pass it over to my colleague, Lou Cece, to read the tribal recognition.
We acknowledge that the Nishtenon people are still here among us today, though nearly invisible. We understand that we are on Nishtenon land that was never ceded, and the original tribal families have yet to recover from the near genocide of their people. As a resident or visitor in Nishtenon land, we support the Nevada City Rancheria Nishtenon Tribe in efforts to stabilize their people as well as their campaign to restore federal recognition.
Thank you for that, Lou. And I'm going to ask my colleague, Gary Peterson, if he will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Oui. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Gary, and everyone else. Madam Deputy City Clerk, can we get a roll call, please? Councilmember Cece.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Vice Mayor Peterson.
Here.
And Mayor Fernandez. Here. Thank you, Gabby. Next, we have the adoption of the agenda. Counsel, now is the time for any of you to mention any agenda modifications. Would anybody like to make any changes to the agenda? Pull consent items, or do we have recusals to announce?
Yes. I would like to pull consent item four.
Okay. This is...
The second reading of the...
Right. I'm familiar. This is not consent agenda pulling, is it, at this point?
It's up.
That's a consent.
Yeah, you would.
Got it. Okay. All right. We're pulling consent agenda item number four. Thank you, Lou. I'm looking for a motion in a second to adopt the agenda with item... I am just checking. It is four?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. That's okay. I'm looking for a motion in a second to adopt the agenda with item number four pulled for additional consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Great. I have a motion and a second. A motion by Councilmember Fleming and a second by Councilmember Cece. Those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? All right. Five-zero. Motion carries. All right. Next, we've got a delightful presentation. I'm going to invite Chief Foss to the podium, and we are going to witness and be a part of the swearing-in ceremony for K-9 police officer Ruby.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. So, this is Ruby, as everybody has met before. Traditionally, we do the introduction to the council once they've completed their FTO program or Field Training Officer program. Ruby has now officially completed her training.
Yay.
She actually had her final, was supposed to be scheduled for Tuesday. We had to reschedule for emergency surgery, but she's doing excellent. She's doing great. She was, she had to get spayed a little bit early because of infection, but nothing critical. Ruby was born in October, so she's 11 months old now, correct, Greg? And she's been with us...
Does that make her a Scorpio or a Libra?
I don't know.
When in October, she's a Scorpio.
So she's Scorpio. I'm not sure of the traits for that, but so far, she's been amazing in everything we could ever hope for. She's very lovable. She's very friendly, and she is unbelievably gifted in the ability of tracking. So I went and watched her just recently, a couple weeks ago. I mean, the best I could describe it is it's almost like there's a rope attached to her nose that just drags her towards the central, and she is able to bypass anything in her path. These hounds, which was kind of comical to me anyway, is when they drop their head, they actually go blind, and it's designed that way, so they don't use their eyes. They just see the world through their sense of smell. But she does run into things sometimes because she's blind that way. But she's, her ability to track, we tracked two people that day. She went straight to them, almost like they had left a trail on the ground that's only visible to her. So I really think she's going to be a benefit and a great asset to our community. And also today, just in case we ever need it, she was at the station all day, and my staff love her, and I heard a bunch of commotion going on, and I came out there and said, "What are you doing?" Gabby was helping, and they were teaching her to howl on command. So in case we ever need that, she's, she's coming along quite well on that end, too. So with that, we're city clerk. I'd love to swear in Ruby for her first day. She is, as tradition dictates, she does have to outrank her handler. So this is her handler, Greg Anderson. Unfortunately for Greg, he totally gets lost now that he has this dog around. But she outranks him, so this is Captain Ruby, and she has her own badge coming.
So who's leading who?
If you do, if you do watch, she definitely leads him. So when they do go tracking or on the trail, she is out front, 20 feet in front on a long lead line, and Greg's just running to keep up behind her. She's tracking whatever she's...
That's awesome.
So, yeah, that's, we'd love to hear the office, and then we'll have her do her paw print for her sign.
You can stand anywhere. Here's the chief.
Sure, if you want.
Come on.
Good girl.
Repeat after me, Ruby.
Almost. I'll get there. Reflect, reflecting upon the importance of our new K-9 and K-19 to the Nevada City Police Department, the city and the community, I ask you to repeat the following oath, and he can howl, or she can howl. I, Officer, well, I...
I, Officer Greg Anderson, and Officer K-9 Ruby.
Captain.
Captain.
It's a tough room.
I've, I've learned well. The military did well. Do solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Do you solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
We will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
We will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And will well and faithfully discharge, to the best of our ability, the duties of the Nevada City Police Department K-19.
And will well and faithfully discharge, to the best of our abilities...
Upon which we are about to enter... Sorry.
The duties of the Nevada City Police Department K-19, upon which we are about to enter.
We take this obligation freely and will steadfastly protect the rights, lives, and property of all citizens and uphold the honor of the police profession. This we solemnly swear.
We take this obligation freely and will steadfastly protect the rights, lives, and property of all citizens and uphold the honor of the police profession. This we solemnly swear.
Now, before it's over with, there's a pretent, a presentation for you.
Look at that.
Look at her.
This is something we did for Rudiger, and there's no discrimination at all, as you can tell.
That's one for you.
Yes.
Can you just...
Pick the one you want.
Think they should eat it on camera.
Okay. Here, give it back to Emile.
That's a nice touch, Tom. Thanks.
And we, we can thank SPD for supplying these. Yes. Not supplying, but having them.
You can tell it's an SPD cut right there.
Well, that's it. Thank you.
We'll do the, I think we're going to do, where, do you have the, what, stamping this one? All right. We're going to see how this works out.
Oh. Go.
Oh, she's right pawed.
Right.
What the heck?
Left-handed dog, looks like the city manager.
Pretty good.
Good shot.
Hold it up.
Do we get a picture with the council and Ruby and Greg?
Yeah. How would, how would we best do that? How would you like to, where would you like to do that?
Make a call. She's already won.
Probably if we could squeeze it right here, this is probably a good little spot.
Congratulations, Captain.
Maybe one of these...
I call my baby shoes, guys.
Ruby, Ruby, good girl. Ruby.
It's worth it.
Right?
Yeah.
The highlight of our meeting.
Great.
Let's hope not, but it could be.
I'm sure it is.
I don't see anything else to get.
All of my friends in big cities assume all of our meetings are just like that.
Dogs?
Yeah, just, oh, you swear in the dogs. What are you doing there in the paddock?
Yeah.
Swearing on dogs.
The Navy gets to swear on dolphins.
Really? Well, they're highly trained.
They, they find mines.
Yeah, they, they are really, really good.
It's beautiful.
That gets all of our attention.
Ruby's like, "I don't know what they're doing." We look at Sarah smiling.
Such a well-behaved town.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Foss. Thank you, Officer Anderson, and of course, thank you, newly Captain Ruby. I did say that was going to be delightful. Do folks agree? That was delightful?
That was delightful.
Thank you, everyone. So, one more thing. Chief Foss, I'm going to ask you to come back and talk about teamwork, please.
So, thank you, Mayor, again, members of council. So I kind of wanted to recognize just some of the teamwork that's done by the city. A lot of times, we think when we're out here doing things and solving crimes and taking people to jail and taking drugs and guns off the street, that it is all the police department. This is a team operation, for sure, and we get a lot of help from the team from the entire city and the community. But this one in particular, I wanted to thank, you got to come up here, Shane. I wanted to thank Shane, who's Director of Public Works here for Nevada City Police Department, or actually Superintendent of Public Works. So I want to give a little bit of details, and I'm going to present him with this, of what happened. So on the early morning hours of July 27 of this year, at about 4:00 AM, the officers were dispatched to a call regarding an argument with several individuals involved. They got statements that one of the individuals likely was armed with a firearm, and at that time, he had fled. We were able to locate the person, the individual, and they no longer had a firearm. It was very credible information that there was a firearm at one point in time, and our fear was where this was, that they had dumped the gun somewhere nearby, so they weren't caught with it. And we were very afraid that this was going to land in the hands of the wrong person, potentially a kid going to school or something of that nature, and then we have an accidental discharge, and we have a very terrible incident. So we spent many hours looking for this firearm and could not find it. We called Shane out, and we said, "Hey, do you have a metal detector?" And he said, "Yes, I do." And we said, "Can you bring that?" And he said, "You guys are dummies. I'll just mow this with my weed eater, and we'll find it real quick." And about...
Exactly.
In about, in about five minutes into it, he took out a weed eater, and he went, "Is this it?" And he held up a firearm for us. But for that, it wasn't even an issue where we were looking to charge somebody for this firearm. We just wanted to recover it for the safety of our community. And this was a huge deal, that without Shane, we probably wouldn't have located it. We were just getting ready to give up, and we thought, "He must have dumped it somewhere else. We can't find it." And it's just one of those things of teamwork, where as a community, as members and staff for this wonderful city, we're able to solve some of these problems. And, you know, we never know what we prevented, right, when we did this. But potentially, we prevented saving, or potentially, we saved somebody's life by doing this, and that was all Shane. So we wrote a little thing here for him, and I would just like to say thank you. And yes, please, a round of applause for Shane.
Thank you. I'm not as cute as Ruby, but I like to take myself as a gumshoe.
Into the microphone, sir.
Yeah. Ten people standing around, I just decided to go get a weed eater and do it myself.
It's that kind of thinking.
I am really glad to be a part of this team, so it's my honor. But, yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
What kind of gun was it, and did you charge the person? You couldn't charge them?
We didn't enough charging him. We had enough witness statements that we were able to charge him. I don't know what the status of currently is, and it was a Ruger Automatic.
Loaded?
As you recall. It was loaded, yes. Yeah. So it was very...
Nice work. Nice work all around.
Yeah.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment that, having been a former Public Works Director and very familiar with our superintendent and the fine job he does, is that I've often advocated that Public Works people should get T-shirts that say, "Heroes" at half the cost.
I'll buy that shirt.
I'll give you one.
I'll buy it for you.
Thanks, sir.
Gary has a few.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Shane. Thank you, Chief. Just want to mention, too, they already left, and I am so sorry. After that last presentation, I also wanted to thank Neil and Todd for their, their piece in that as well.
And the meat, yeah.
And the steaks. SPD for providing those lovely, beautiful, nice-cut steaks. All right, moving right along. Public comment. Government Code Section 54954.3 provides that any member of the public may address the city council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act, with limited exceptions, does not allow the council or staff to discuss issues brought forth under public comment. The council cannot take action on non-agenda items. Concerns may be referred to staff or placed on future agenda, on, on a future agenda. Please note that comments from the public will also be taken on the consent calendar and each agenda item at the time it is heard. Is there any public comment in the room on an item not on the agenda? Please come up to the microphone. Let us know your name and where you reside.
Everybody knows my name, and I don't, I reside in the Environs. What I'm going to comment on first is the matter of the signs. My friend is one of the people involved in this, and she got her sign for $5 at like a garage sale. What I know, and a lot of you people don't know, is how publicly, at least, is how badly a lot of the businesses are struggling. And almost, you'd be surprised, more than half of the business owners are on welfare and get food stamps for whatever they can be approved for. And that's the case with my friend, and she says it brings, helps to bring in a lot more business, that there's been a big pickup since she's had it. And there have been many times, especially last summer, she thought she was going to have to close shop altogether. But another issue about this, however, is the degree of the accuracy. I'm an art history major. That was my specialty of many things that I studied over 13 years of being a shut-in and doing nothing but study. And one of the things about it, I happen to know, is that according to the historical thing, the cutoff is 1940. The biggest time for neon in this country was actually in the mid-1930s. And you can review numerous old photographs to see, you know, neon everywhere in the mid-1930s. It was, it's even, you can watch It's a Wonderful Life, where it becomes Pottersville, and there's all this, this neon. I mean, that was maybe a little bit after, you know, 1940, '41, maybe, but it's very close. And so basically, we're in a building that was made in, what, 1937, '38. One of the finest pieces, I think, of Art Deco that I've ever seen in the country is the courthouse, as a matter of fact. And that was 1938. The market down here is 1940. It's an eclectic, historic district. And, you know, I like the people in the Historical Society. On something that I'm going to talk about publicly, that maybe I should keep a closed mouth about, but I go up to San Juan every once in a while, just for a mini vacation, just a change of scenery. And the people who are, have, some of the people that have been on the Board of Directors have had the idea to burn down part of the schoolhouse, and I'm not kidding you about this. They actually think that way in certain areas. That seems to me a lot, and I've told the Historical Society this, that seems to be a lot more of a problem to deal with than a few people in the neighborhood having neon when the cutoff is 1940. So anyhow, I just, that, that's going to wind up being my comment. I think it's helpful. I don't think it distracts from anything, and it, it helps people to continue to make an income. And there's only like three.
Thank you, Andrea.
All right. Thanks. See you around.
Hello, council. My name's Rory Gotham. This is my neighbor, Linda Toll. We live in Perseverance Mine Corps off of C.R.L.'s in Nevada City, and that initially was a HUD, California Rural Community Housing, I think I got the names wrong, but, 30 years ago. And we have CCNRs and a deed restriction on our property that can be terminated or rescinded by December 31, 2023. So it's coming up pretty quickly. We're trying to figure out how to do that, and at this point in time, all of the 13 houses owners would like to approach the city to see if we can actually move in that direction. We've done quite a bit of research. We looked at the HUD requirements for housing projects, and a lot of the CCNRs can be removed and terminated and rescinded between 30 and 45 years. We looked at the Mercy Housing Authority, and they look at 20 to 25 years to get rid of CCNRs. So we're going to approach the city. I have a handout for you. Sean, thank you so much for your assistance. He provided me with a copy of the CCNRs and the deed restriction, and I'm hoping that we will provide you with enough information that will stimulate you to ask us questions. Of course, we're novices and just doing the best we can to represent our little community. Mainly, the driving force is that if we don't do anything by December 31, it automatically keeps the CCNRs and deed restriction in place for 10 years, up to 99 years. And we just kind of feel that we'd like our little community, nestled in Nevada City, to become an affordable housing project rather than not. And so I hope you'll take time to read the handouts that I have for you. And let's see, Linda visited the Recorder's Office at the county, and, and they gave her a form that will allow us to move forward to get signed and notarized by all of the, all of the people who make up our little neighborhood. So we invite your questions, emails, telephone calls. You can knock on my door if you want to, but I'm going to hand these out to Gabby so she can give them to you. Thank you for your time. I hope you will support our endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Look forward to that handout. Any other public comment in the room not on an agendized item? Or Gabby, do we have ... Or Gabby, do we have anything online?
If you'd like to speak on items not on the agenda, please raise your hand.
I just want to say, you guys want to keep me fabulous-looking, right?
We do not. Madam Mayor.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. As a reminder, we are pulling item number four. Before we take action on the consent calendar, we will hear any public comment on consent calendar items only, including any requests to pull consent items. Do we have any public comment on a consent item? Either in the room or online? I am looking for a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar items one through three.
I move that we adopt the consent agenda items one through three.
A second.
Great, we've got a motion and a second. Are there any objections to the motion? Okay, I'm not hearing any. That means the motion carries. We are now going to look at consent item number four, the second reading and consideration of ordinance 2023-09, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Nevada City, adding Chapter 2.38 Public Arts Commission to Title II, Administration and Personnel of the City of Nevada City Municipal Code relating to the establishment of a Public Arts Commission. It was pulled for separate consideration by Councilmember CC. And I would like you to ask your questions and then we'll take public comment on the item.
Okay, I have two questions. The first one is, can members of this commission reside outside the city limits?
As the ordinance is written, the members of the commission, all seven, have to live within Nevada County. They do not have to live within the city limits.
Okay, that was number one. And how does one apply to become a commissioner?
So we have an established practice in the council adopted policies and procedures that speaks to committees, commissions, and other entities by which the council either collectively appoints or individually appoints, in the case of the Planning Commission. So the way this would work, for the four that are recommendations from the community groups, that being CHIRP or the NISANON, the Historic Society, the Arts Council, and then the Chamber of Commerce, we will ask them to provide us a name, but we'll do it in the same fashion that we solicit the applications for the two at-large positions as well as the youth commissioner position. So if you do second reading on this tonight, at our second meeting in October, we will announce the vacancies because we'll now have vacancies for an established commission. And they'll be, it'll be posted outside, it'll be posted on our website. The form to submit people's interests will be available there as well. And then those will be collected through the month of November. And then anticipating that you would make your appointments at the only meeting in December, the first meeting in December. So that's the same practice as we would if we had a vacancy on the Planning Commission or on the Fire Safety Advisory Committee was the most recent vacancy where we had to do that.
And just one follow-up question. Are there any other city commissions or committees that allow membership from outside the city limits?
There is not. The council rules for ones that don't identify that, specifically the Planning Commission or other committees, is that the membership is of local, of those that live within the city limits.
Okay, thank you.
And I will note that the four organizations that are represented are, they are Nevada City organizations and those members will be representing the organization. So I think that's an important distinction to make. Any other thoughts, comments, questions, concerns from the table? All right, we're going to take public comment on this item. Is there any public comment in the room? And what about online, Gabby?
If you'd like to speak to this item, please raise your virtual hand. We do not, Madam Mayor.
Great. So I am looking for a motion.
I move we adopt the ordinance, hold second reading and adopt the ordinance.
If a member was so inclined, the motion would be to conduct the second reading by title only and adopt ordinance 2023-09.
I move we hold the second reading by title only and adopt ordinance 2023-09.
I'll second that. You're welcome. I'm here for you.
Great, we've got a motion in a second. Can we get a roll call, please? Councilmember CC?
Before you do that, Madam Clerk, ordinance 2023-09, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Nevada City, adding Chapter 2.38 Public Arts Commission to Title II, Administration and Personnel of the City of Nevada City Municipal Code relating to the establishment of a Public Arts Commission. And roll call, please, thank you.
Councilmember CC?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Fernandez?
Yes.
Carries 5-0.
Fantastic. Councilmember CC, I appreciate you pulling that item and offering additional clarity for us and those watching at home.
Yes, thank you.
And for the record. Okay, we are moving right along to... Business item number four.
Five.
Five. I thought, I thought, I took a minute, right? Right? Right, five. Funny, my thing says four. Item number five.
Auto numbering.
Auto numbering. Consideration of Adoption of Resolution 2023-45, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Nevada City, California, approving a date change for the regular city council meetings in October 2023. Take it away, Mr. Sean Grayson.
Thank you. Due to scheduling conflicts, we're asking that you adopt the resolution that's before you to move our regular October council meetings from the second and fourth Wednesdays to the, which are the 11th and the 25th respectively, to the first and third Wednesdays, which would be the 4th and 18th respectively, which would mean that our first meeting in October would be next Wednesday. We post the agenda this coming Friday. We, the resolution is the normal process. The, our meetings are the second and fourth, although the council can change those meetings at their discretion by resolution. We do anticipate discussion for the needs for fire, fuels mitigation, and education programs, among other things, and the consideration potentially of tax measure by the council in October. So important that the community hears that we're moving the dates of the agenda. And then ultimately, if you do approve this tonight, tomorrow, we'll do a press release that we're moving those dates and then we'll announce the agenda items as, as I said, starting this Friday for the fourth. And just to be clear on what we're trying to do, not hide anything, give everyone opportunity to speak if they would like to on those items. So with that, we'd appreciate if you would adopt the resolution, which would move your two regular meetings to the 4th and 18th of October.
Thank you so much, Sean. I'm looking for public comment in the room or online.
If you'd like to speak to this topic, please raise your virtual hand, lower right-hand We do not, Madam Mayor.
Okay, is there any discussion at the table?
So the agenda for the next meeting comes out the day after tomorrow?
Correct.
Yikes.
Anything else? Fantastic. I'm looking for a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved. Okay.
Rose Shambault.
Second. I was going to read it, but that's what we have Dean for. Oh my goodness.
Mr. Pucci, we do, we have a motion in a second.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution number 2023-45, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Nevada City, California, approving a date change for the regular city council meetings in October 2023. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember CC?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Fantastic, thank you everybody for that. All right, moving on to agenda item number six, consideration of a city grants management policy. Take it away, Steve.
Hey, Steve. Hi, Steve.
Thank you. Hi. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. So during the city's last annual independent audit, it was noted that the city did not have some key policies in place. And above and beyond that, the city is continuing its practice of taking advantage of grant opportunities going forward. So right now, we're going to have about $4 million in active grants, Prop 64, Cohort 2, Prop 64 Cohort 3, Prop 47, et cetera. And we just want to have a policy in place that really walks city staff through everything from the grant application, the grant award, record keeping, the various audits that we will get from the grant teen agencies, the state, the feds, single audit, and the various responsibilities of every department. So this policy achieves that, brings us into compliance with what we should have and will hopefully, and should, secure taxpayer money, grant dollars, and transparency. And with that, I'm trying to keep it as basic as possible. I'll answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Steve. Before questions, I would like to take it to public comment in the room. And online.
If you'd like to speak to this topic, raise your virtual hand, lower right-hand corner. We do not, Madam Mayor.
Great, thank you. And then we'll bring it back to the table for any questions for Steve, comments or concerns.
Be my local government geek, but I really admire this process. This is a very good document. It's well-written, it's very clear, it's step-by-step, it's precise. Really good job. I just wanted to comment on what a nice policy you've written.
Thank you.
And I also want to say is that after having met you in person at the League of Cities last week, you're even nicer in person than you are on the camera.
It's true.
It's true.
Definitely.
But great policy and good work, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Anybody else?
I just want to reiterate what I said to the table before, Steve. You know, I work with a lot of different jurisdictions and one of the things I try to get everybody to do is write the reporting into the grants, you know, and to make that a policy that happens, just so you don't have to take it out of indirect costs or things like that. So when I saw that in there, I knew we were on the right track and it's just wonderful. I understand, though, that this is a pared-down version of things that you've used in the past and we will be regaled with future versions of the management policy as they become more relevant to us when we get our operating system.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Great.
That's my comment.
Great? I figured it was.
Well, I'm just waiting for somebody else to comment now.
Adam Lou, have you got anything?
Nothing to add.
Nope.
Great. Gary, is there something else?
No, I was going to...
You were eager to make a motion.
I want to move that we adopt the city grants management policy.
I accept that motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
He seconds that.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there anything we'd like to add to that, Mr. Pucci Esquire?
Madam, you are golden.
Don't you wish all your councils were this polite?
Gabby, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember CC?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes, wholeheartedly.
Vice Mayor Peterson?
Yes, gladly, gladly.
And Mayor Fernandez?
Yes.
Carries 5-0.
Fantastic. Good job, everyone. Steve, thank you so much, as always, such a pleasure.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council members.
I'll talk to you on Friday, Steve.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving right along, trucking right along. Item number seven, consideration of approval of the purchase, installation, and two-year maintenance agreement for six security cameras from Flock Safety in the amount of $40,500 and authorize the city manager to sign and required documents. Chief Foss, please take it away.
Thank you again, Mayor and members of council. So yes, tonight, we're going to be talking about Flock security cameras and what they are, what they bring to the table for us here at the city, and almost equally as important, what they do not do. So I want to jump into what they first do not do. What they do not do is any type of facial recognition, advanced license plate readers, they do not do any of that. These are your traditional-based live-feed security cameras. Why that is important is there's several bills, assembly bills and Senate bills that have been passed that do restrict, to some degree, the use of license plate readers. You could still use them, you have to use a completely different process to go about if you don't want to bring them to the city. Probably the most controlling of those bills is SB 34. But because we are not bringing any of that to the table, that is not what we're going to be discussing today, but I wanted to just confront it right up front in case there's some questions on that. These cameras here, the Flock security cameras, it's the Flock Condor System. It, what it does is it live-feeds to the department. The beauty of this, we have come a very long way in law enforcement since when I first started. These need power source only, so they can be mounted anywhere where we can obtain power for them. It cannot be solar power, it does have to be hard-wired power in. But they do have their own data feed at that point, so we don't have to wire data to them, which, Councilmember, I'm sure you're very familiar with, is the difficult part. The power part is usually far more easier to get. But these have their own data system, their own SIM card, that is covered in the cost, that live-feeds the data back to us with maybe two- to three-second delay in time is what you're hopefully, hoping for. The system then, I always think, I still think of the security cameras where you're going to have the little controller and spin it around and everything else, but these are pan-tilt zoom cameras, which means you can zoom them, move them, tilt up and down, back and forth, zoom in and out, but it is all controlled from a computer. So any officer that logs into a computer system, logs into the network, they're able to control the cameras and live view them from their computer. The cameras hold data for 30 days, so they record everything for 30 days. After 30 days, it is purged and lost unless we retain it. So if we do see something that has evidentiary value to us as a department, then we're able to capture that timeframe and then we, just like any piece of evidence, we label it as evidence and it goes into our evidence system, which is called evidence.com. And it is not obtainable by anybody unless they have a reason to view that evidence. So it'll go to the district attorney and the officer that's going to be the primary officer for that crime. What the other thing that these do bring, that I love about security cameras, is just like an officer on the street or a patrol car on the street, as soon as you install them, they lower crime. And I think that's equally as important to what they're capable of doing. We're looking at purchasing six cameras. We don't have the locations selected just yet. We have an idea of where we would like to put them. And we are incorporating the community on where they think that they should be included as well. But we do know some areas that we are, that are on the top of our list of where we'd like to place them. So Pioneer Park is very important to us to get some coverage over there. We would like a camera at the commercial parking lot. Our downtown's very important to us as well, if we could find another opportunity there to place a camera. Seven Hills, we want to make sure we have a little bit of coverage in that area. So we have some spots that we are interested in. What we are primarily trying to reduce here is graffiti, and these are our number-one crimes that we do have. Graffiti, if we place them in the right spot, they can be traffic deterrents as well. It won't be used to capture traffic data, that's not the purpose of them, but if people see a camera there, sometimes it helps as traffic deterrents just all by itself. But what we primarily see is petty theft crimes, shoplifting crimes, graffiti crimes, those, these will be instrumental in solving those. And heaven forbid, if we do have a major incident anywhere, this is going to be a great tool for us to be able to solve any type of critical incident that we do have in the areas that don't cover this. Six cameras would give us very good coverage for the city. And it would expand it from there. What you're looking at for this proposal is for two years. The total cost, it's $750 per camera for the initial setup fee, $750. And then every year is $18,000, which includes the data and the software and everything that comes with it. There is no contract beyond that. We're looking at doing a two-year contract upfront that would be covered under Prop 64. And then the $18,000 would be covered under the police budget every year thereafter. The beauty is, if we play with these for two years and we see no value to them, we can just decide that we don't want to continue with Flock. So it is great in that way, but if we do continue with them, it'll be covered on So it is great in that way, but if we do continue with them, it'll be covered under the police department's budget. And with that, I think I touched all the talking points. They have night vision.
Could you talk a little bit about how they mesh with your body cams?
We're not taking comments yet, but go ahead, Chief.
Yeah, no, that was just if we had any questions. But I got your question, so I could answer, I think. So we do have, that's primarily why we actually selected this system, is it meshes with our current software extremely well, it's the same parent company. So in other words, we use evidence.com, which, anything that you collect is evidence, anything the officers do collect, they enter it into their computer program or they're writing a report, and it prints out a label, and then they attach that to the evidence piece. And then evidence.com keeps all that stuff for us, and it sends it to the district attorney's office with all the labeled pieces of evidence. What's wonderful about this system is if we just capture that, instead of having to download it and put it onto another hard drive, and then making a copy of that hard drive, and then attaching it to our secured system where you have another piece of where it could be potentially lost or misplaced or anything else, it goes directly from the camera system right to evidence.com, and we don't have to worry about that. So it takes out that piece. And it also is the same parent company as our Axon body cameras, so it will work flawlessly with the current system that we do have, which is almost priceless for what we're looking for when we're considering things for evidence.
Great. Thank you, Chief. I do think it's important to, I would like to get public comment on this before we bring it back to the council, and I would like to remind my colleagues that there is process in decorum, so if we could, please respect that process. Chief, please stay close by.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Close by, and we'll see, is there any public comment in the room?
I will comment again. I think the cameras are a very great idea, and I really want to thank the chief, who everybody thought, when he came here first, we butted heads a little bit at first, but you know, they thought that, oh, man, this guy hates you, he wants to get you out of here, all this stuff. I get along better with him than almost, than a lot of people in the town, is the truth of the matter, and he's done more for me when I've been in need than, barring none, and immediately went then, than anybody just about in social service. It takes months to get things done, but if I talk to this guy, and it's something that's a need immediately, it gets done that day. And so, thanks for a safe community, because when I go to outlying areas and I come back, you know, that's one thing, it's a relief. Nothing ever happens here hardly, you know what I mean? And that's a really great thing. But yeah, it's great to have security cameras. I think this is a great thing. As far as placement, I would say probably Broad Street, the top end and the lower, Commercial Street over by Crazy Horse, probably a backside of SPD, because that area gets, I noticed, a little bit of graffiti, and there's a lot of kind of rough types that go to the laundromat, and a lot of underage drinking, quite frankly, potentially at the location back there by the brewery. So, but yeah, great, great idea, and thanks, thanks for making the place safe.
Thanks, Andre. Any other public comment in the room? And Gabby, do we have any public comment online?
We do. Steven Greenberg, go ahead and address council. Are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Hi, Steven, we can hear you.
Thanks very much. I can't see you, by the way, but I can hear you too. So you're free to make faces at me, I won't even know. Anyway, just kidding. I sent everybody an email, I hope you've had a chance to read it, if not, I hope you'll read it soon, but I outlined four particular concerns that I have about the public security cameras. Just summarizing quickly, because I want to make another couple points in my few minutes here. Basically, I outlined four factors, which I hope you're going to take into consideration. One is, are the cameras really necessary? How so? Are they minimally intrusive to individual privacy? Are they really effective in reducing and/or solving crime? And I cited some studies on that point. And do they have a positive impact on local policing? For this purpose, I'd like to just make two points about the careful balancing of interests, which I think you, that's your role, that's what you're stuck with right now, and I'm asking you to do, as I'm confident you will, and two aspects of that balancing here. One is, in a democracy, we've got the tension between the public need for security and the individual's right to privacy and freedom from overbearing government. A classic, modern example in most of our lifetimes is after 9/11, all the debate and controversy around adoption of Patriot Act, when I think everybody agreed that there was a need for public security. The United States had been attacked, but at the same time, there was a lot of debate and concern about government overreaching in the aftermath of that. In Nevada City today, what I don't hear, and I didn't hear the chief mention in otherwise a useful presentation, is where is the public clamor for security along the lines, say, of what we experienced after 9/11? Maybe it's happening here, but it's nothing I'm aware of, I'm not asking for it, and I'm not aware of folks who are asking for it. That's one issue to be concerned about. And then the other is also in the balancing interest. Even assuming that the interest in public security somehow outweighs other considerations, then you also need to weigh the effectiveness of the technology, which I spoke about in my email. Looking at one end of that spectrum, and I mentioned this in the email, surveillance cameras can be used to monitor people based on an officer's individual biases, even unconscious biases, and that's something to be concerned about. But at the other end, and I didn't touch on this in the email, what about the issues of actual crimes caught on video, and what will the police do about it? An obvious one that's violated every, just about every moment probably in Nevada City is smoking in public, which is illegal but happens. I imagine it's going to be caught all the time on video. Is anything going to happen because of it? And just as a related point, I want to remind everybody of what happened here three years ago during the Black Lives Matter demonstration in August 2020. On camera, on police cameras, individual police cameras, and on many people's public cellphone or private cellphone cameras, we all saw a crime being committed by around, I don't know, 20 or so individuals who violated, for the world to see, a California Penal Code Section 647(c), which says, makes a misdemeanor for every person who willfully and maliciously obstructs the free movement of any person on any street. We saw it happen. There was no question about it. It was as slam-dunk as it could be. It was like January 6th, right here in Nevada City.
Steven, I'm just going to, I'm going to cut you off, just if you can wrap up your overtime.
Not a single person was arrested or charged for violating that. So that's another question that needs to be asked, is how is this going to get used? All right. Thanks very much.
Thanks so much for your public comment and for your thoughtful email, Steven. Any other public comment online, Gabby?
We do. Go ahead, caller. Go ahead, are you there?
This is Matthew Coulter. I have a few concerns on the camera situation. There's many, many of them popping up all over Grass Valley. I understand that it's just a software change that makes that camera go from 98% effective facial recognition to what it's being used for or as being presented, and that's just a software change, has nothing to do with the camera itself. Also, what does, how does the public have access to the footage on the camera? Say something happens with the police on the street, and the public wants access to that camera to show what has happened. What would be the process for the public to get that, being that it's erased so often that it might be gone before they could, you know, offer it up and install tactic? And also, just the whole Big Brother thing and the whole camera thing, it's, you know, England loves it, they have a lot of people sitting behind desks, looking at screens, and deploying officers. But I'm glad the gentleman brought up the Black Lives Matters March, because I just revisited that and watched it just in the last couple of days and posted it on my page, because it was just so shocking to see things take place right in front of officers. So just concerned about the fact that if the officers won't do something, if it takes place literally in their presence, you know, feet from them, how will having it caught on camera and revisiting it and then coming back at it? In this fast-moving world, it seems like so much is lost, you know, moment by moment, and things don't seem to be gone back and being dealt with, because things are moving quite fast. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Chief, I'd like to invite you back up and give you an opportunity to speak to anything you heard from, comments from the public.
Yes, of course. And I also should have mentioned, have Caroline, who's on the Zoom call, I believe, who's representative of Flock and connects, answer any more technical questions if I can't. But let me try all these, if I can remember them all. So first of all, for the facial recognition, I'll touch on that again real briefly. This software and this hardware has no capability to do that whatsoever currently, and they have no intention of implementing that in their system whatsoever.
So you can't just change the software, and suddenly the camera will do facial recognition?
I'm going to allow Caroline to answer that again, but as my understanding is, absolutely not. And Caroline, are you able to unmute and confirm what I'm reporting on that?
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me okay? This is Caroline Frayer with Flock Safety.
Hi, Caroline, we can hear you. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you so much for having me this evening. So there is nothing within Flock or within our software that has anything to do with facial recognition. That is not something that we do, nor is it something that we will ever do as a company.
Okay, thank you for that, but the specific question, and it was a very specific question, was, can you change that software and then those cameras can become facial recognition cameras? That was the question.
No, they cannot.
Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline.
So a couple of the other ones, he had some great points, the first caller, actually, and I hopefully I can get them all, so help me out if I miss one or two. Is there a call for this? I don't know that I'd hear a specific call for cameras, but I have had, or have heard a lot of outreach from the community, especially in the downtown, pertaining to graffiti is one of our major issues that we're having, and that is very expensive for business owners. And we cover that up a lot as the city, but sometimes for the business owner, that does fall on them to cover that up, and it is damaging to our community. And we see a lot of that. And so I have heard a lot of outcry from the community to try to solve that problem. We've had everything from hate crime, that we were trying to rely upon private property cameras to solve it, and with the cameras here, could I say we'd capture it? No, but it gives us a lot better chance and opportunity to do so. Also, as I stated initially, just the fact that we do have cameras will hopefully limit this, some of those crimes. We had an incident soon after we installed our, what are they called, EV chargers, and we had somebody that heavily damaged one of them. We were able to catch that suspect, in part because of some existing cameras we have, and we just barely caught a fraction of that vehicle. And where we're looking at placing some of these cameras now would either have deterred the crime from ever occurring, or made it much more likely and easy that we would have captured the suspect. So they are very important, and they are a very vital piece of modern policing, but also what he said with the Balancing Act. And I am a firm believer in that Balancing Act, and that's a big reason that I opted to go with the live-feed cameras as opposed to the LPR cameras or anything else. I think these are something that have tried, trued, and tested, and been around for a very long time. This is not anything that's new technology, it's advanced tremendously, but this is something, if you go to virtually any business nowadays, they do have private cameras. Private cameras and government cameras are very different. But one of the selection things that is important to me is, where am I going to place these cameras? I want to place these cameras in places where you have no need to be there, and what I mean by that is it's a choice to go there. So if you do start placing cameras where you have a need to go, I'm not saying that that's a negative, but for me, then it is a little more intrusive, like, hey, I have to go here every day. But if you're placing cameras like the theory with driving, do we have to drive? We really should, it's hard to not. But it's not a need or a necessity, right? If we're placing them at the park or somewhere where it's just heavily trafficked, or we're not going to be able to heavily scrutinize every individual person, we're trying to capture the broader scene of things. So placement of them is important, and of course, that'll be something that we're not going to hide from people. We want it to be very apparent where we place these cameras, and where they're at and what they can see. Other questions that were on there? Regarding the question of how would the public view them, that would be more of a question, I think, related to our city attorney with the Public Records Act. If it is purged within 30 days, if we don't have it, we can't, we don't have anything to turn over. If it is evidence, then it's going to go through the evidence process, which again, if they're related to the crime, they'll be able to obtain it. If they're not related, it'll go through the standard procedure. I don't know if you want to speak on that a little bit, Dean?
Just following up briefly, the city would follow any standard processes they would with any other Public Records Act request, whether written or electronic, and follow the guidelines and the provisions, including the exemptions and the rules provided by state law in terms of disclosing that.
Thank you.
Another question, great question, was if an officer has a bias, even an unconscious bias, would they use these cameras to fulfill that bias? I can't say that they couldn't. That's something that, to be honest, we can't say that they couldn't. What I can say is I have an excellent team, I have excellent officers, I have excellent staff, and I have excellent supervisors. And that is our job to make sure that our officers aren't suffering from some type of bias that they are acting upon or have in general. I mean, that wouldn't be limited to cameras alone, of course, so that's anything that if they have a bias, that is our job to capture and make sure that it's not part of our police department.
Appreciate that answer, Chief. That was a good one.
And I think that was all the questions I can remember him asking.
We will remind you if you missed anything, I'm certain of it. Bringing it back to the table, questions, comments, concerns, clarifications.
Chief, who's, who do you envision monitoring the live feed?
So all the officers will have access to it, and my vision would be that they use it regularly. So what I would like to see is if they are in the office writing reports, this gives them the ability to both write reports and be stuck in the office, but still monitoring our community to some degree. So it could be on the second screen and be live-fed to them directly. If we place them right, if they do get a call, I mean, it's not too hard to vision, if they get a call and they say, hey, we're having an incident at this location, it'd be very easy for the officer to very quickly look up and say, oop, and they're going to know, okay, this just happened a minute ago, they might be fleeing this way, let me look at the camera there to see if I see a vehicle fleeing or somebody running, and it gives them a lot better opportunity to achieve successfully their job than before.
So that sounds like they, if they happen to be in there and they're filing reports, they're in the office, so there's not going to be a dedicated person watching six screens, anything like that?
No, there won't be that. So that will be whoever's working at the time, every one of the officers will have access to it, and my expectation would be that they're viewing it regularly while they're working, that they are monitoring it.
So it's not instead of them being out and about?
No, nothing replaces them being out and about. That is the best form of policing. But unfortunately, we do have to be in the office frequently for writing reports, booking evidence, and anything else you're doing, and this gives us a tool to somewhat bridge that gap.
Did I understand that correctly, that they can also pull that up on their computers in their cars?
Their MDT, likely, but I don't know that I'd recommend it, because it's dangerous for one, for them.
Not where they're driving.
Yeah. And usually, their MDT is a laptop, so the screens aren't so big, and most of it is taken up with the calls for service. So a lot of calls for service are popping up and feeding through there, which is equally as important. But in theory, they could, yes. If there was a need, law enforcement, as you know, if you could imagine it, it's going to happen sooner or later. So could they potentially do that, and will it be needed at some point in time? I can almost guarantee it will be, but I don't know what scenario that would be.
Yeah, so a couple things. So I appreciate the work, I appreciate the research, I appreciate, you know, looking at the synergy between, you know, Axon and all that. This was the first grant I wrote, was this Prop 64 grant, and I was working with your, two of your predecessors ago, and we were, the way the grant is designed, it's designed to provide funding for public safety, public health, youth services, and things like that. So this was in the public safety realm, and the justification for having this paid for by the grant is that it had to have some nexus to cannabis. And so the concept that we came up with at the time was that we would place two cameras, not six, two cameras at strategic points so you could track all of the cars that came in and out of town. So the egress and ingress to town, and I was told at the time that there was only two points of, that we would only need two cameras to cover everything. You know, and you have to realize, this is in the backdrop of a break-in at the dispensary. So the concept was, hey, all right, somebody breaks into the dispensary, can we see- So the concept was, hey, all right, somebody breaks into dispensary, can we see their cars that are leaving town, or something like that? And so there was this nexus to cannabis. Can these, you know, cameras, six or two of them, work in that effect? I, I understand you were working on placement here, but is there any consideration of placing them in places that would capture the people who come in and out of our town?
Yeah, so one of the, um, I think I mentioned it, I might not have, but one of the places that I am, I envisioned having this camera is Sacramento Street near the gas station there that's, um, on and off the freeway. So we have a lot more, as you know, than two places, so I'm not sure what they...
Yeah, yeah.
We have several more than two.
Yeah.
But we do know where, when we do have somebody that comes in and with ill intent, or is just trying to get out of the town quickly, which roads they're gonna go on.
Yeah.
And that's where we're trying to place these in general. So like the one in Seven Hills, Argyle and, and Surles is a great location. Zion probably has more traffic, but we find that a lot of people, when they're trying to get away, tend to use Surles, because then it's easier to get onto the freeway from there. Um, so the intent is to, I don't wanna say create a web, but you're trying to create a complete picture of your city. And when you have anything that occurs, where is the best places for these cameras to be placed where we can capture that footage, whatever it may be? So the nexus as to marijuana or cannabis, um, is, I mean, it's everywhere with it. So anything that does happen with...
Yeah, everybody has a nexus to cannabis.
Uh, yeah. So anything that does happen with any of our dispensaries, or if it's cannabis-related, hopefully these cameras would be able, they'll be in position to assist us in solving that.
So, you know, one of the things, I, I did a bunch of research on this, and, and, you know, I, I'm appreciative of the cameras you chose. One of the things they do get you is on the storage of the data, right? So the cameras are cheap, but the storage of the data is more expensive. And that's gonna come out of the, uh, police budget, um, annually. Is that a hit to the budget? Is that something that we have contingency for? You know, eighteen thousand dollars a year is not nothing.
The, the wonderful thing with this camera system is it's cloud-based, so we don't have to actually put in our own servers to store this data locally.
Yeah.
And the evidence is stored cloud-based as well through evidence.com, which is already supported, and we're already paying for. So it's just the flat eighteen thousand dollars a year for the cameras themselves. And then the data is captured separate, separate through evidence.com, which we're already paying for.
So wait, wait, I, I'm confused. So what, what are you paying eighteen thousand dollars?
So the eighteen thousand dollars is mostly for the, the upkeep of the camera systems.
Oh, okay.
And then the data, the, the data transmitting back and forth?
Yep, 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 yep.
So they have a cell phone chip, maybe we could have a...
Same card. No, I, I understand. I just wanted to make sure.
But the data, because we don't have to have a data point there, so we have to have a PowerPoint there, and the data being transmitted live feed to us, that's all data that somebody's paying for, and that's being covered through the eighteen thousand dollars. Does that make sense? Do I answer that, or we can call upon?
Yeah, no, that, that's perfect. Um, and then one of the things that, you know, for, um, our first caller, Mr. Greenberg, um, one of the things that was built into this grant is an evaluation process. So, you know, at the closeout of this grant, we are supposed to evaluate all of the products that we, you know, all the equipment we purchased, the masticator, the, the things we were able to purchase. And so there will be an evaluation, you know, at the end of the grant closeout, and obviously at the end of the two-year period. So we will be reviewing this, you know, in a, in a very thorough manner, because our evaluator is pretty, pretty sophisticated, and that's a whole process, too. Um, and then, one of the things I wanted to point out, though, when it comes to the trust in, in, uh, who's gonna be monitoring this, are people gonna use it for nefarious uses and implicit bias and things like that? I, I'd just like to point out to the public that we have a whole new team here, you know, from two years ago. We have a new leadership at the police department, and, and I, I just have to say, I trust your leadership in this, and, and I'm gonna support you in, in the choices you make with regard to this equipment, you know? And, and I think that's a big statement, because there, I, I wouldn't have been able to say that previously about our police department. And so, you know, I, I'm really happy to be able to say that now. And so with this kind of technology, I would, if I didn't have trust in the leadership of the police department, I wouldn't support its deployment. But since I do, I do support it. So, thank you.
I, thank you very much for that.
Thanks, Doug. I think that's a really important distinction to make about having, um, a new department and new leadership, and, um, I couldn't agree more. Thanks for saying that. Anything else at the table?
Yeah. Um, I got, I got a couple things. Um, let me just pick up where, where Doug left off, because that's a really important point. Um, it's, you know, we made a lot of change, and we were really good at it. It wasn't huge and disruptive and highly visible, but this is not the same organization that was in place when August 9th happened, at all. And, and, and including...
Thank goodness.
And thank goodness. And, and that includes the police department. We've completely changed the entire philosophical approach of policing in this community with the support of the chief and with the support of Sean. So I too trust the chief in this. I have managed many, many, many of these systems and, and put them in place. And, um, uh, no, I don't like them either. I don't, I don't, I don't like being watched either. I don't want anybody knowing what I'm doing. But you know, uh, we, that's the world we live in now. That horse is out of the barn. And though, though I don't like it, every time I'm at my ATM machine, my picture's getting taken. And, um, and on and on and on. So, um, it's out, out of there. These are valuable tools. Uh, one of the areas where I want to say that we heard this very clearly is in the parking study. And that's in the safety of, in our parking lots. And as you mentioned, one in Commercial Street, where we've already experienced significant vandalism, um, with, with facilities and graffiti. Um, and, you know, you get back into, uh, Commercial Street at night, and there's some people back in there. Um, and that's why we will also hopefully soon be going to lights, uh, which is also gonna be a challenge to people, because we're gonna light up areas in our city that haven't previously been lit. But it's important, this is about the safety. But watching that, keeping that eyes on there, it is a highly cost-effective way of keeping an eye on known areas of danger rather than deploying bodies. And like I said, I don't like it, but I see what's happening in the park. And I hear from people that use the park about the increase in graffiti and vandalism in the park. And talk to your public works guys about people trashing bathrooms, and things like that. And I hate that stuff. I mean, I, I, the destructive vandalism, it just, you know, there's no sense in it, uh, but it's happening. And that's, that's one of the places. So, um, what happens also is once people know cameras are there, and once a couple people pay the consequences of being on camera, um, you do get crime. Uh, it does change, it does change the dynamic. But I, but I would also say that, um, you can think you know where to put them, and over time, you will find out where to put them. And I'm not satisfied with a two-year evaluation. I, I would like six-month updates on how this program is working. I, I think it's important so that we can understand this, the, the efficiency of these, of the, of the work, and just how exactly it's working and how it's being received. I think this is something, it's not anything about not trusting you, Chief, or anything. It's about staying, keeping our fingers on the pulse of, of what could become a divisive issue. So I, I, I am willing to support this, um, with that, with that one change.
Thanks so much, Gary. I couldn't agree more. Um, you had said earlier, Chief, that, uh, uh, you will assess at the end of two years if there's been value. I'm curious, I, I heard Doug mention this sort of grant evaluation, but I'm asking you, how do, how would, how will you assess the value of these cameras? Um, and at this point, I also support a, a six-month, um, check-in, for sure.
Yeah, so an easy assessment is any crime we capture. That's, of course, gonna be the easiest assessment. The harder assessment is what crimes do we avoid? And where we can start looking into that is we already do keep good analytical data of the crimes that have occurred in certain areas, so we can compare, has it actually gone down since these cameras have been installed? Will it be the only factor? No, we don't know that. We, we know that, you know, the increased foot patrol is gonna contribute to that. We know that the increased regular patrols can contribute to that. But the cameras will be a factor to it. Um, I will say that, that does remind me of, one of the comments is, I wasn't privy to the letter that was sent in regarding the, they don't show, um, a decrease in crime for the camera systems. In my 20 years, I've seen this being a drastically, um, increase in solving crime through video surveillance system. I mean, almost unmeasurable, the amount that is solved through camera footage, as opposed to how it used to be when I started in the early 2000s. I have no problem doing a six-month assessment, because it's just as important to me if they're working, or if they need to be adjusted, as it is to everybody in our community, right? If they're not working where they're at, do they need to be moved? Are they just not good for our community? And if they're not, then I would be the first one to say, hey, we tried this, we tried it on a grant, they don't seem to be effective, um, then what's the point of keeping them, right?
Sure.
But obviously, thinking off the top of my head, the very easy assessment is how many crimes we capture. And I'm confident it's gonna be used in many of our cases. I, I think on that alone, I'll be able to present to you every six months, like, hey, it was instrumental in this case or this case. And, you know, I'm also a proponent of, I think, um, you said, Councilmember Fleming, eighteen thousand isn't anything. But if it does solve just a handful of crimes and you're the victim of it, it is very valuable to you, right? So I, I'm hoping that we'll be able to see some, um, good cases that are solved, in part because of this camera system. And I would have no problem making that, however we want to present it every six months. We'll just have to make sure it's on my calendar, so I don't forget.
And, and... But I know someone who can help out with that.
I'm sure too.
It's already on your calendar.
Real quick, real quick, I just wanna, I wanna make room for Councilmember Cece's voice, uh...
Yeah. I have a question for the Flock representative. Um, are you still there?
Yes, I'm still here. Can you still hear me?
Yes, I can. So in the sole source letter, under point two transparency and ethical product design, it says, "Privacy controls to enable certain vehicles to opt out of being captured." How is that possible if you're not capturing license plates?
So that is possible with the LPR component. However, the LPR component is not applicable to the Condor. And where people are able to opt out is with our HOA or community partners. Where if a camera were situated at an HOA, a resident can opt out of having their license plate taken. But since there no is LPR technology at all with the Condor, then this wouldn't be applicable to the Condor livestream camera.
Good. So someone reading this particular letter shouldn't see red flags going up, oh, they really do have LPR? But...
Correct.
We do, we will not.
Correct, yes. So our foundational product is an ALPR camera, but that is completely separate. It's a different camera from the Condor livestream. So there will be no license plate recognition whatsoever with the Condor livestream cameras.
Thank you.
And to your point, I caught that as well, and I tried very hard to get those removed, because it's not representative of our camera system, but it is a blanket sole source letter, so it was included in there.
Okay.
Good catch, Lou.
And thank you for reading that.
Can I ask you a point of, uh, clarification, Sean? You've read the local evaluation plan. Do you remember off of, of the top of your head what the evaluation process was for the cameras? Because it's not any, you know, we don't make up some grant evaluation, it's the evaluation that you would do. It's just the way she wrote it into the...
So we just amended the local evaluation plan or the LEP for the Prop 64 Cohort II grant, which is what this is coming out of. That's our original, um, the one that you wrote that, that you're speaking of. Um, and the, the amended one will likely be amended after we get these cameras, um, to refine it, but, um, it speaks to, um, the frequency of use, um, by officers, um, the amount of, um, the, so we'll, we'll know however many times officers log in, look at these cameras, you know, so that's just a, you know, that's a, it, an input, it's not an output or a, an outcome.
Yeah.
But the outcome measurement, um, for the cameras is, um, uh, crimes or safety hazards identified. Um, and then the nebulous one that, that chief spoke about, um, that it'll be harder for us to manage or to measure, but we should be able to, is, um, perceived crime deterred. So we'll look at the same area in the previous year and say, this is how much graffiti was done, for example, at the ban shell at the park, um, in the previous year versus after the camera. And we could, you know, uh, we could anticipate that there's possibly influence of the camera in that. Those are the three elements that are in the LEP.
Yeah, and I, I just wanted to point out that there, there's some, actually, some good metrics to, to evaluate these kind of, uh, technology.
Great. Um, anything else from the table?
I just, I just had a thought. Um, I think, I think we're generally okay with this, because we like you and trust you, and the change in culture that we've seen in the department. God forbid, uh, the culture change again, or, uh, you go somewhere else. Is this something we can revisit if we're suddenly saddled with someone we don't have this kind of trust with?
Yeah, of course. And that's actually the nice thing about these, this camera system, is the investment to mount it is not that bad. And the investment on some of the older systems is tremendous. Where you have to run data line to the, um, security cameras, you have a very big upfront investment. So you don't want to just experiment and then pull them down. Um, our investment is seven fifty, seven hundred and fifty dollars per camera to mount it. And then everything after that is just the annual data fee, which, so which means, if we do say, hey, we don't like this, or we don't like the next chief, or, or you don't like me anymore, then, for whatever reason, um, we could say, hey, we don't want these anymore, and we don't wanna cover them in the budget, and they will be removed. So, uh, yeah, this is a much easier system to, or much safer system to experiment with, I guess I would say, where we can try it, see if it's gonna work. And if it works, then it's a great investment. If not, we can reassess.
You're thinking about when Ruby works her way up to chief, aren't you?
I just don't trust that dog.
Um, I really appreciate the, the depth of, um, conversation, um, about this topic. I think it's important. I appreciate the chief's, um, thoughtfulness around choices in this. Uh, thank you so much. Um, Dean, am I allowed to take a public comment? At this point? Am I allowed to go? Can I go back to public comment?
Uh, you can, um...
There's comment in the...
It's just a simple question. If the power goes out, does the cameras go out?
So that's actually gonna be a question for Crystal. I don't know if they have batteries on them or not.
She might not have heard.
If the, so the question was, if the power goes out, does the cameras go out? And I would believe they do. I don't think that there is a battery system on it. Do you, can you answer that for us, Crystal?
Good, Caroline.
Caroline, sorry.
I don't beat her off the top of my head. Um, that's definitely something I can find. Since the cameras will be hardwired into existing infrastructure such, such as, um, a traffic arm or a light pole, um, if those poles were to lose power, then there's a possibility that the Condors might lose power as well. But if I could confirm that and let chief know, that would be much appreciated. That's the first time I've had that question come up, so it's a good one.
We lose power a lot.
Yes, that is, that is, that is a good question. Thank you.
I'm, I'm gonna make the assumption that we do lose them. The, a battery in those would be expensive, it would be more maintenance.
I'm going to make the assumption that we do lose them. A battery in those would be expensive. It would be more maintenance. Maybe not, yeah. I'm going to make the assumption that.
Streetlights go to bounce on a battery for 24 hours, so.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the purchase.
I move that we approve the purchase.
And can I get a second?
I'll second.
Great. Gabby, roll call please.
Wait, does Dean want to read something really lengthy?
Nothing to read.
Dean is pinching his hand under the table, so I'm good.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Councilmember Cece.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Mayor Fernandez. Yes. Pass is 5-0. Thanks so much, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, council. Thank you.
And thank you, whatever the company's name is.
Thank you, Stephen.
Caroline, thank you so much.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you so much for having me.
Yeah, you're very pleasant.
All right, moving right along to our final agenda item, number eight. Consideration of adoption of resolution number 2023-46, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Nevada City, California, adopting a records retention schedule authorizing destruction of certain records and rescinding resolution 2015-36. Mr. Grayson.
Awesome. So as you know, we're upgrading and updating many of our systems. Some of our systems are paper only. And the place to start with that is in your records management program. So there are thousands of laws that pertain to records management, especially in California. And our current records management policy was adopted by the council July 22, 2015. I would just say that it's not consistent or aligned with current law or best practices. So the adoption of this resolution rescinds that previous adoption of resolution, adopts new retention schedules and a process that is both compliant. It'll be updated on an annual basis and it gives us some pretty good efficiencies of process for our staff. As you know, it's not very large. So we're using consultant called Gladwell Governmental Services to do this. That firm does this initial work, met with all of our departments, created these schedules based on the law and local expectations. In other words, we can decide to retain longer if we would like. And to create these schedules, and then they will also update them on an annual basis or as laws change on a, you know, ad hoc basis, but definitely on an annual basis. The structure of this is that we won't come back to the council for records destruction because we'll be following the schedule. And it basically means that we will be labeling big boxes of documents with what they are on, what schedule they fall under and what their destruction date will be. And that allows us to, you know, have a very uniform approach to doing this, always knowing where our records are and what ones are going to be destroyed. And then once we destroy them, know what we destroyed, which, you know.
We don't have that now, do we?
I'm guessing in, we don't have that now. And I'm guessing, you know, when the city started in, you know, 1856, they maybe do. But we do have some records from then. Since Neil has already left, maybe he's watching at home. We're not destroying historical records. So those are retained in perpetuity. Both the historical records and the books that we have that are the ledgers of the actions of the selectmen is what the council was referred to at the time, those are not allowed by law for destruction. So there's a whole bunch of things that we retain forever. But they're those kind of, you know, historical works of government things. So this is, we also will, so we'll destroy records, keeping records of what we destroyed, but we'll destroy them without coming back to council. We also won't come back to council to update the policies when it's to comply with the law. So in other words, if they say today it's two years you have to retain it, next year the legislature says, no, you got to retain it 20 years, we're not going to come back to you to say, we're going to follow the law. If however, it becomes less restrictive and they say today it's 20 years, tomorrow it's two years. If we wanted to adopt that, we'd bring it back to the council to give us the authority to lessen the time period that we would retain records. So, you know, overall, this is just one of the multiple steps. So our finance software was the kind of the linchpin to everything that we're doing. You know, you already authorized us to purchase that. It's well underway. It'll be live starting in the new year. And then eventually by mid-year budget, it'll be working in tandem path. And by next year's budget in July of 2024, we'll be fully cut over to that. By the end of the year, you will, I hope you'll award a contract for a new website, which will be compatible with our finance software. And will allow for, you know, online bill pay and a variety of the other things that will come for our utility billing, business licenses, things like that. And then this is the, this records retention policy, now we can go after the, kind of the third leg to that stool, which is a records management software that allows us to keep and file and easily access all of our digitized records. Our current digitized records started about 2015, moving forward. So we have, you know, give or take 157 years of records before that. But, so that will take some time. But that will, that item will also include in the records management, Public Records Act management software as well so that when people ask for it, we can easily search for it and provide it if we have it. So that's kind of the three-legged stool of what we don't have today, but that we will by the, you know, July of next year, the new budget. So that's the long-winded version of, I would appreciate if you would say, our previous policy is no longer in effect, the new policy is in effect and we will comply with that policy for our records management going forward.
Thank you so much. Any public comment in the room on this item? And what about online, Gabby?
If you'd like to speak to this topic, please raise your hand.
All right. What about the table?
Yeah, so another good policy, I hate this, I mean, the document.
We all hate.
I'm telling you, I'm telling you, I have been through, you know, so many of these and, you know, discovering.
Don't say.
Discovering that you have a warehouse full of records, you know, what are you going to do with those? This is comprehensive, as it should be, covers it well and I think is going to get us where we need to go. And it is really important. It is the history of who we are, it is our track records, it is everything else. And it's also why we have fabulously talented city clerks to devote their lives to records management and elections. So, but this is, this is good. Again, we see a deft hand at work here with bringing modernized policies into place. And my eyes frankly rolled up in my head as I was reading it. But that's what those, that's what those documents do. They're great if you can't sleep at night. But I would support this and I'm happy that we have this. I do understand, as light, as much as I don't like, as light as I make of it, these are critically important documents when it comes to, you know, standing up for your city, whether it's legally or showing your history or tracking your, you know, what you have accomplished. These are really important items and we need to be as modernized as possible. Thank you all stop.
Thanks Gary. Anybody else?
The idea of digitized searchable records is exciting.
Is it exciting?
I'm physically excited.
I can see, I can tell.
I was going to ask, does it produce a public searchable database?
This doesn't. The software that we would anticipate purchasing, which will also be grant funded, would. And it would, and so that's where the connection to the finance software needs to connect to the website for that purpose. The records management software and Records Act request software needs to connect to the website for the same reason because the website would be the portal through which you would do that kind of search.
But I would say that, you know, even on our website, such as it is, you can access our entire municipal code, which is really, when you come to searchable items, it's one of the more important ones and you can get there even with what we have now.
I want to read the minutes of old Paul Mattson meetings.
Okay, I am looking for a motion to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Nevada City, California, adopting a records retention schedule authorizing destruction of certain records and rescinding resolution 2015-36.
I move we adopt the resolution that you just said.
I second.
Great. We have a motion in a second. Can I get a roll call, please? Councilmember Cece.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Mayor Fernandez. Yes.
And you did get the request for the former, the minutes that you'll look up for Adam, right?
I will, just.
Thank you Gabby.
You don't have enough to do, I'm sure. All right.
Yeah, he's probably got a drawer.
City manager's report.
I'll be brief. I have gotten probably a dozen calls and twice as many emails about the impacts of the government shutdown potential. So since we have a council meeting next week, if our federal legislators don't do what we hope they do, then we will have an update for you on that. What I've shared with everyone is, you know, California has lived through this previously. It was a 36-day shutdown. If this does happen, who knows what it is. But the city continues to operate. Our budget as it is continues to exist. Almost all of our revenue streams are not tied to governmental activities. We have no furloughable employees. Our phones will still be answered. City Hall will still be open next week regardless. There are projects and grant fundings that could be impacted as far as their reimbursement goes. But that should not stop the projects or in any way influences. That doesn't mean there won't be impacts, but there won't be anything that anybody needs to worry about before next Wednesday when you'll have another council meeting where hopefully we don't have to share anything about that.
Fantastic. Thank you for that. And what about council member report backs? What have folks been up to?
Well, there was the League of California Cities Conference, which was informative. And I came away with some wonderful ideas to share with the Fire Safety Advisory Committee. And in upcoming events from October 5th through 8th, I will be in Benton, Illinois, helping celebrate the 50th class reunion of the first high school class I taught.
Oh, wow.
That's cool.
Amazing.
Fantastic.
I was at the farmer's market in a capacity of come talk to your council member kind of thing. I was a guinea pig and so hopefully all of you. It was fun, but we should have had some signage that says this person's a council member. I talked to some folks who knew who I was and had questions and got some good input and everything. But for most people, I was just a man standing there waiting to be talked to.
Maybe we could get a dunk tank with no produce to sell.
I had no produce. I was just standing there smiling pleasantly. Still worthwhile and I hope we all do it. I got a piece of excellent news right before the meeting that I wanted to share, really so the meeting is nicely bookended. The chief told me, so Planning Commissioner Wendy Ermshar was despondent this morning because of her missing cat. She's got twin cats. One of them got out. And she was at the downtown business meeting this morning and I had never seen her in that kind of emotional state. And the chief gave me the good news that Taylor, who is the friendly face, if you go to the police desk here in City Hall, usually she's the one there. She actually tracked the cat down and cat has been returned to Commissioner Ermshar. This meeting has gone to the cats and the dogs, ladies and gentlemen, next.
He'll be here again next week, folks.
All right, Doug, Gary.
What I'm hoping is that we have a housing, I'd like to know the status of our trying to get the housing. No, it was, what is it? The workshop.
The workshop.
The workshop, getting that scheduled. And also my colleague Adam and I would like to schedule a Parks Commission meeting. Parks Council, what are we, committee?
Recreation Committee.
Committee. We're a committee. We meet so much that we.
Recreation Committee.
Yes. Parks and Recreation Committee.
I used to be on it.
Back in the good old days, huh?
Is that something you've done in government, Gary?
Gary, what have you got for us?
Councilmember Klein, Fire Safety Advisory Committee tomorrow night. Doing some, we're trying to move some work along and I think, I want to believe we're making progress. I want to believe we're moving. So that's what's up. League of Cities was good. I think it's extremely beneficial and rewarding to be hanging out with all of you in a place where we're all learning together. I think that it really contributes to the team and Sean is an excellent cat herder, you know.
He's a tour leader.
Yeah, tour leader. We're going to give him one of those little flags to carry around. But it was good and I really appreciate the opportunity to be there from part of the city.
And an exceptional meal provided by Joplin's mayor once again. And fun times.
Nice, it's fantastic.
Yeah, it was good. I'm good.
Great. I'm looking for a motion in a second to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
I second.
I thought nobody was going to make a motion.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Hey, look at the head.